Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, May 16th, 2017 School Board Meeting for the Doveria School District. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Benko, could we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Brenton.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. DeSho.
Here.
Mr. Delauter.
Here.
Mr. Eifert.
Here.
Mr. Emmig.
Here.
Mrs. Herman.
Here.
Mrs. Maylie.
Here.
Mr. Rahouser.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Presentations and celebrations, Mr. Cherry.
All right, I'll start off with our April recognition. If you have opportunities this evening to stop out, our pictures are up on the right-hand side. Once again, this is our peers nominating their peers for these awards, so I think it's a big thing. So join me in congratulating all those individuals. This evening, we had an opportunity to have dinner with some of our great folks that will be leaving us this year. Some have already left us but came back to haunt us. So it was good to see Dave. So at this time, we would like to just take a moment to recognize those individuals and their year of service. So if you hear your name being called, if you could come forward, Nate and I have a certificate for you. Speaking of Dave, Dave Casino. He had nine and a half years of service here in the district. All right, Mr. Stephen Walker. He had 24 years of service, I think. All right, Mr. Nick Stoller. And Nick had 33 years of service here. And Larry Dunn. Larry Dunn had 27 and a half. I was supposed to leave my hat on, that's the only way people break by. And season buddy, just wanted to take time to recognize Tina Lindbergh, and she is retiring with 26 years of service. David Taylor at the Intermediate School, and he had 13 years of service. Diane Worley had 18 years of service. Kathy Emmig is leaving us with 30 years of service. And Stu Seick with 22 years of service.
Mentee recognition, Ms. Jackson.
Good evening. As you all know, we had a new induction plan that was in effect this year. All of our mentees are required to do a two-year program. Usually, we're giving certificates out at this time, but the state recommended that we do at least the two-year program. But part of what they are doing is coming to this meeting, and then we'll meet, so that this is the end of their first year. So next year, Tracy will give them their certificates of completion. Part of the induction process is that you have to go through it, complete it, so that they can get their Level Two certifications, once they get the right credits. But I did want to recognize all the hard-working ladies, and Jacob's not here, one gentleman that's part of it. So I'll start with Ally Dietz, who is our alternative Ed. Samantha Patton, she is our library media specialist at the high school. We continue with the high school, we have Sarah Bean. Jacob was the other math teacher, so there were three new math teachers at the high school. We had to continue on with math, Shawna Weaver at the Intermediate School. Also, math teacher at the Intermediate School. We have Nicole Randall, who is an autistic support teacher at Waggles Town. Brittany Sowers, who's a learning support teacher at Dover Elementary. And we're missing Caitlin also, I didn't see her coming through, who is a counselor at North Salem. Okay, so I'm going to take the...
Can we grab a picture real quick?
Sure. All of you, if you want to. Great call. You want me to take a picture? All right. Everybody ready? Thank you. Got it.
Okay, we have two more awards to present tonight, and these to our student representatives, where all that they have done is keep us informed of all of the great things that are going on in the buildings in the district. We look forward to their updates every month, as they bring us up to speed on what's happening. So we have some certificates that we would like to present to you for all of your service, and for putting up with some very boring meetings at sometimes, too. So if you could come up, Sophie. I have Sophie of honors.
Then we have Julie Fox, our senior representative. She gets a certificate, and also a gift certificate to the school store, so she can carry on her school spirit as she needs.
Well, we certainly have a lot to be proud of this evening, and I'm glad to kind of give a brief comment on the next one. So we asked Andy Apgar to join us this evening. So I was able to attend an event not too long ago, and see standard nine, is it?
Twelve.
Twelve, sorry. I had it as Renaissance first, so I was all messed up getting in there, so they were able to rewrite my script and so forth. But part of the PMEA conference was the recognition of quality staff around the state. So I'm just going to read a little statement here. "Andy received the PMEA District Seven Citation of Excellence Award for middle-school teachers. District Seven is comprised of eight county areas in south-central Pennsylvania. He received this award at the PMEA All States Conference and Erie." So I'd like to just take this moment to recognize Andy, and again, thank him for all his contributions at the Intermediate School. We really appreciate everything that you bring to that program. I don't know if we have any other board members who'd like to say something, so it was a nice conference. Everything music.
It was a nice conference. I went as a chaperone for standard twelve, and was not able to stay as long to hear or see Andy receive his award. But thank you for everything that you've done for my kids personally, and for all of the kids as they go through the Intermediate School. Lots of positive feedback from everybody that has contact with you, so thank you.
I can't say enough positive about Ms. Apgar as well. My daughter's now been there for two years, and enjoyed every single moment of her life there with you. So thank you for all you've done for Lydia.
Again, Mr. Apgar, thank you for everything. Appreciate it. All right. All right, Bobby Joe, it's you. So one of the things I can always count on is every year I get this email from Bobby Joe, and she's usually asking me about a dress-down day that we could have in the district to help support the Autism Awareness Walk that she and a team of teachers do. So this year, I got a follow-up email that said, hey, you did really, really well. So I invited her to come to the board meeting this evening to tell us a little bit about the trophy we brought home.
Thank you. As you said, my name is Bobby Joe Lebo. It's my 13th year as a personal care aide of the district, and I'm honored to present this award to the district on the behalf of the Autism Walk. The event was Saturday, April 29th, and it was called the Big Give Family Fun Day and Vendor Fair. It's usually known as the Autism Walk slash Expo, but due to reorganization of their reconstruction of their organization, they changed it this year to the Big Give Family Fun Day and Vendor Fair, instead of the Autism Walk. In the past, I have participated in the walk with my first student. This year, we did it as a team called Dover Proud. Thank you to Mr. Cherry for allowing us to do it district-wide again. We raised $710 throughout the district, and we do a casual day, so students or teachers and staff can pay $5 to dress down on a certain day, and then that money we took with some outside donations, we raised $750 on behalf of the team Dover Proud. And the organization is Autism of York, and this is a huge fundraiser for them. It's the only thing they do to earn money in. And Autism of York is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to provide support to individuals in the autism spectrum, and their parents, and their family. Also, just to give you a little background, the funds raised enabled Autism of York to provide social events, monthly support meetings, teen and adult meetups, groups, a lending library and resource directions, and transition planning guides, all to low or no cost for the individuals and their families who are living with autism. All money stays in York and Adams County, so without events like this and people in the district like we did to donate money, they could not keep going. So thank you again for allowing us to participate, and this year, we were the third-highest fundraising team. So the trophy is going to go back to Live. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Lots of exciting things tonight. Communications, our student report, ladies.
I will be starting with Dover Elementary. They had their annual Science Fair Arts Night and Musical Recital on May 8th. They had 140 Science Fair projects submitted. Mr. George, the community librarian, made a presentation to all of their students about the summer reading program on May 9. Fifth graders participated in outdoor education on May 10th, 11th, and 12th. On the same day, our sixth-grade teachers held a grade-level breakfast for the students and their parents. Some students received individual awards. On May 15th, the high school seniors participated in a senior walk at Dover Elementary School. Our sixth-grade students visited the Intermediate School on May 16th. The PTO Fun Day is on May 19th, so they will be having 45 former senior high students helping with this event. The Media Club will visit the WGAL television studio on May 22nd. Band and choir concert will be held on May 23rd in their all-purpose room from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m., and their awards assembly will be held at 9:30 a.m. on May 25th. Moving on to Live Elementary, congratulations to Live Elementary and Byrathon teams, two teams, one representing grades three and four, and the other team representing grade five and six. The teams were coached by Mr. John Mark Murphy and Mr. Alex Ross. The teams placed in individual categories and in the overall competition. On Thursday, May 18th, the Live Elementary sponsorship from the Live PTO will host our third annual STEAM showdown. Students in grades four through six will complete with a focus on the engineering design process. Students will work on either a balloon car, paper tower, or catapult challenge. We will also hold a breakout EDU room, similar to an escape room. Solving math problems will also be a challenge for the students throughout the day. Live also hosted their Fine Arts Night on May 3rd. Students' musical performances, artworks displayed, and technology projects were viewed. Visitors had the opportunity to participate in a QR Coke scavenger hunt throughout the building. Grade six students visited Junior Achievement Biz Town on May 10th, and their grade five students, once again, thoroughly enjoyed their outdoor education program. Moving on to North Salem Elementary School, on Thursday, May 11th, North Salem conducted the Critical Incident Response Exercise in cooperation with the Intermediate School and the Northern York Regional Police Department. The exercise allowed all parties involved to learn about the family reunification process and improving our security measures. The students and staff members would like to thank the Intermediate School and the Northern York Regional Police Department for their assistance with the elementary students. The sixth graders had a farewell social on Friday, May 12th, from 3:45 to 5:30 p.m. The students enjoyed a photo booth, DJ, games, and treats. They would like to wish our sixth graders success as they move on to the middle school.
And then for Wagglestown, stage to the page at the Strand was enjoyed by students in grades K through second grade. On May 2nd, this year's production was Miss Nelson is Missing. On May 3rd, Wagglestown Elementary had the Spring Arts Night, recital, and cultural night. Thank you so much to the students, Mr. Ischler, Mr. Spence, and Ms. Ortiz for a great evening. Fifth-grade students enjoyed three days of outdoor education on May 8th through 10th. Thank you to the district's fifth-grade teachers and all the volunteers that make this awesome educational event happen each year. May 15th is a busy day at Wagglestown. Sixth graders will travel to Dover Intermediate School for a visit to help them make a successful transition to seventh grade, and DHS seniors will be visiting Wagglestown for the second annual senior walk. Thank you to Mr. Rup and Mr. Wassler for coordinating these events. The band and choral concert will take place on May 18th at 6:30, and they would also like to thank the Wagglestown PTO for their hard work throughout the year. For the Intermediate School, on May 4th and 11th, those were the spring concerts. The band and choral students did an amazing job. Congratulations to Mr. Apgar and Mr. Keller on their group's amazing performances. On May 17th, they will recognize their honor roll and distinguished honor roll students with a pizza luncheon and an ice cream social. So thank you to Sherry's Ice Cream for donating the sweet treats. May 18th is the eighth-grade field trip to Washington, DC, so thank you to Mrs. Meford for organizing and making this trip occur. May 24th will be their awards assembly. They'll recognize their amazing students and the efforts that they put forth throughout this year, and then the day will also be the end-of-the-year social. Lastly, for the high school, this Monday, we held our end-of-the-year assembly, and the program recognized all the positive contributions and accomplishments of our students and staff during the 2016 and 17 school year. On Thursday, DHS students will travel to DC to meet with Senator Casey and Congressman Perry, as well as a staffer from Senator Toomey's office. They will be discussing their views on education. Last week, we held our academic awards banquet, and that recognized scholarship and award recipients. And then this Friday, DHS students will travel to elementary schools to support field-day activities. Lastly, on Monday, the class of 2017 took part of the senior walk. Graduates donned their cap and gowns for the first time and visited their former elementary schools and the Intermediate School. Thank you.
Lots of great things. Any questions or comments from our board members? Okay, hearing none. Ladies, you're free to stay, or you're free to head out on this nice night if you'd like. Thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda is our first public comment period. This is a three-minute period for items on or off of tonight's agenda. If you have anything that you would like to state, please come to the seats with the microphones and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you.
Seeing nobody on the move, we'll move on to the board president's communications.
Mr. Walker.
Mr. Walker's coming.
If I could, walk in my three minutes.
Absolutely.
First of all, I want to thank the school board and Mr. Cherry for the opportunity to work in the district as a building administrator. I really appreciate the past 25 years I've had here. I've had the opportunity to work with great kids, super-parents, wonderful faculty and staff. It's been a wonderful experience for me. Came here as a skinny guy, not so skinny anymore, had blond hair, no hair. Have really changed over the years, but it's been a great experience for me. Came as the assistant principal at the Intermediate School, had a great mentor in Ken Walter, outstanding guy, taught me lots of things, never stood in my way. If I had a crazy idea, he let me go forth with it, and it was a good experience. A job opened up at Dover Elementary School, which was my passion in life, to be an elementary principal, and that was great. At the time, Dover Elementary School was an old building, and it was in need of repair. Probably one of the best experiences of my lifetime was the opportunity to help with planning and the design of the new Dover Elementary School, with Mr. Herman and Mr. Nelson. That was outstanding. So I really want to thank you for the opportunity I had to work in the school district. I talked to Mr. Cherry about one other thing I'd like to leave the school district with. Academics has always been important to me, so as I'm leaving, I'd like to develop a scholarship for the top sixth-grade boy and girl that leave Dover Elementary School every year, to recognize their efforts and hopefully push them forward in the future for success. So I look forward to that, and thank you again.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Anybody else? Okay. Moving on to board president's communication, we did have an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss items that were on tonight's agenda, as well as to hear presentations from two law firms regarding our solicitor status. There will be an additional executive session after tonight's meeting to address a personnel matter, so board members, please plan to stay afterwards, again. Okay. Next on our agenda is the appointment of our school board treasurer for the 2017-18 school year, so I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint Steve Cook as board treasurer for the 2017-18 fiscal year.
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Benko.
Quick, be quick.
The time everyone's got is five seconds. Everything's five seconds.
And the motion carries.
Congratulations, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes, so I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 18th, 2017 board meeting.
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko. Okay, and the motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda, we'll go through each category and answer any questions or any comments that we would like to make on any of the items before we move forward. So I would like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll move on to the questions or discussion. We do not have anything under curriculum and professional development tonight. We do not have anything under facilities. We do have items under human and fiscal resources. Are there any questions or comments on any of the items in that category?
I just want to make a comment on the 9.04 transfers, in that, again, we have teachers that we are transferring between buildings due to enrollment issues and discrepancies between the two buildings. And I know, even prior to me being on the board, this is an issue that we've had in this district, where we have, every year, it seems like we have discrepancies in our census numbers in each of the buildings. And I think, as a board, I think it's something that we need to look seriously at, figuring out how to get a handle on those discrepancies, whether it being, again, you know, redistricting, you know, looking at a total different realignment or something like that. But I think sometimes, you know, when you look at some schools where you have a classroom of 20 students, and in the same grade in another building, you're having students that are 28, 29, 30 students, that's just not a quality of education across our district. And I think that we need to really, I think in the next year, take a look at that and say, what can we do to address that issue, and so that we do have that equitable distribution of resources and students. So I want to bring that out there.
And I would like to just add, I agree 100%. And in addition to the fact that it affects our kids, it also isn't fair to our teachers who are, you know, consistency, which ultimately does affect the kids when it comes down to it. So I wholeheartedly agree.
I have a question regarding the accident insurance policies that are on there for approval tonight. I know when we were meeting, before the meeting tonight, and looking at the agenda, that was an item that I think there was still some variability, and you weren't quite sure if we were ready to present that, but just for my own satisfaction and...
So the variability that you and I had spoke about prior to this meeting dealt with our liability insurance, and that is not included in the sports and student accident insurance. These are just accident policies that are offered to our parents, in addition to their regular insurance that they already cover. The rates have not gone up. So I just received the information on these today, so I just put in the attachments, rates stayed the same, no changes from the prior year.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to take us back to the transfer, and kind of piggyback a little bit, that, you know, I agree, I think we need to look at this as a district, because having these numbers be so different is not fair to any teacher in any building. And switching teachers, transferring them to make the numbers work better, while I see the necessity for that for the students, it disrupts the culture of each building, which I know is one of our, one of the things that we, as a district, are striving for, is to create that positive culture. You know, our teachers are very adaptable, they're very willing to do what they can for their students, but it does affect them. And when it affects them, it's going to trickle down and affect the kids. Not that they're not going to do their job well, because I truly believe that they all will, but, you know, seeing this just kind of really gets at me, because I just feel like, you know, there needs to be a better way of doing this, so that this kind of thing doesn't happen so often, because I feel like it does. And I don't feel like it's fair to the teachers, or to the students, or to the buildings. So, yeah, I agree that we do need to take a better look at this as a district.
I'd like to mention one other thing under the transfers while we're on transfers. There was a last-minute addition to the transfer list, and that is that Terry Landis will be moving from the Dean of Students Intervention Specialist position at Wagglestown Elementary to become the new assistant principal at the Intermediate School. So that is on tonight's agenda now, as part of the vote. I did also want to mention, under the resignation area, sadly, Mr. Cherry will be leaving us at the end of June, June 30th. It's been a pleasure working with him. We'll say our goodbyes next month. We still have some time with him, and we're going to make him work really, really hard between now and June 30th. Sure you do. No, it's been a pleasure working with him, getting to know him, and I'm obviously sad to see him go. But in the meantime, we also have on the agenda tonight, under a separate vote, to appoint Mrs. Kroom as our interim superintendent, effective July 1st, so that will be coming under another vote. The board is discussing now the process of recruiting a superintendent. That's part of our discussions after tonight's meeting with Mrs. Jacoby, and how we will go through that process. So I did want to bring that to everybody's attention as well.
Any other questions for anything in human and fiscal resources tonight, for the consent vote? Okay, we do not have anything under safe...
No.
And we do have one item under PSBA representatives. We do, as part of the consent agenda, have to appoint voting delegates to the PSBA conference in October, and that will be Mrs. Brenton and myself. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, we had a motion and a second, Mrs. Benko.
Need to repair. Probably one of the best experiences of my lifetime was the opportunity to help with planning and the design of the new Dover Elementary School with Mr. Herman and Mr. Nelson. That was outstanding. So I really want to thank you for the opportunity. I had to work in the school district. I talked to Mr. Cherry about one other thing I'd like to leave the school district with. Academics has always been important to me, so as I'm leaving, I'd like to develop a scholarship for the top sixth grade boy and girl that leave Dover Elementary School every year to recognize their efforts and hopefully push them forward in the future for success. So I look forward to that and thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to Board Presidents Communication, we did have an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss items that were on tonight's agenda, as well as to hear presentations from two law firms regarding our solicitor status. There will be an additional executive session after tonight's meeting to address a personnel matter. So Board members, please plan to stay afterwards then. Okay. Next on our agenda is the appointment of our School Board Treasurer for the 2017-18 school year. So I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint Steve Cook as Board Treasurer for the 2017-18 fiscal year.
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Benko.
Congratulations, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes, so I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 18th, 2017 board meeting.
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? And the motion carries. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 20th, 2017 board meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, Mrs. Benko. Moving on to our consent agenda, we'll go through each category and answer any questions or any comments that we would like to make on any of the items before we move forward. So I would like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll move on to the questions or discussion. We do not have anything under curriculum and professional development tonight. We do not have anything under facilities. We do have items under human and fiscal resources. Are there any questions or comments on any of the items in that category?
I just want to make a comment on the 9.04 transfers in that, again, we have teachers that we are transferring between buildings due to enrollment issues and discrepancies between the two buildings. And I know even prior to me being on the board, this is an issue that we've had in this district where we have, every year it seems that we have discrepancies in our census numbers in each of the buildings. And I think as a board, I think it's something that we need to look seriously at figuring out how to get a handle on those discrepancies, whether it being, again, you know, redistricting, you know, looking at a total different realignment or something like that. But I think sometimes, you know, when you look at some schools where you have a classroom of 20 students and in the same grade in another building, you're having students that are 28, 29, 30 students, that's just not a quality of education across our district. And I think that we need to really, I think in the next year, take a look at that and say, what can we do to address that issue and so that we do have that equitable distribution of resources and students. So I want to bring that out there.
And I would like to just add, I agree 100%. And in addition to the fact that it affects our kids, it also isn't fair to our teachers who are, you know, consistency, which ultimately does affect the kids when it comes down to it. So I wholeheartedly agree.
I have a question regarding the accident insurance policies that are on there for approval tonight. I know when we were meeting, before the meeting tonight, in looking at the agenda, that was an item that I think there was still some variability and you weren't quite sure if we were ready to present that, but just for my own satisfaction and...
So the variability that you and I had spoke about prior to this meeting dealt with our liability insurance, and that is not included in the sports and student accident insurance. These are just accident policies that are offered to our parents in addition to their regular insurance that they already cover. The rates have not gone up. So I just received the information on these today, so I just put in the attachments, rates stayed the same, no changes from the prior year.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to take us back to the transfer and kind of piggyback a little bit that, you know, I agree, I think we need to look at this as a district because having these numbers be so different is not fair to any teacher in any building. And switching teachers, transferring them to make the numbers work better, while I see the necessity for that for the students, it disrupts the culture of each building, which I know is one of our, one of the things that we as a district are striving for is to create that positive culture. You know, our teachers are very adaptable, they're very willing to do what they can for their students, but it does affect them. And when it affects them, it's going to trickle down and affect the kids. Not that they're not going to do their job well, because I truly believe that they all will, but, you know, seeing this just kind of really gets at me because I just feel like, you know, there needs to be a better way of doing this so that this kind of thing doesn't happen so often, because I feel like it does. And I don't feel like it's fair to the teachers or to the students or to the buildings. So, yeah, I agree that we do need to take a better look at this as a district.
I'd like to mention one other thing under the transfers while we're on transfers. There was a last minute addition to the transfer list, and that is that Terry Landis will be moving from the Dean of Students Intervention Specialist position at Weiglestown Elementary to become the new Assistant Principal at the intermediate school. So that is on tonight's agenda now as part of the vote. I did also want to mention, under the resignation area, sadly, Mr. Cherry will be leaving us at the end of June, June 30th. It's been a pleasure working with him. We'll say our goodbyes next month. We still have some time with him, and we're going to make him work really, really hard between now and June 30th. Sure you do. No, it's been a pleasure working with him, getting to know him, and I'm obviously sad to see him go. But in the meantime, we also have on the agenda tonight, under a separate vote, to appoint Mrs. Kroom as our interim superintendent effective July 1st, so that will be coming under another vote. The board is discussing now the process of recruiting a superintendent. That's part of our discussions after tonight's meeting with Mrs. Jacoby and how we will go through that process. So I did want to bring that to everybody's attention as well. Any other questions for anything in human and fiscal resources tonight for the consent Okay. We do not have anything under Safe and...
No.
And we do have one item under PSBA representatives. We do, as part of the consent agenda, have to appoint voting delegates to the PSBA conference in October, and that will be Mrs. Brenton and myself. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, we had a motion and a second. And the motion carries. Okay. Under human and fiscal resources, we do have some individual votes tonight and some other discussions. So first is the Homestead-Farmstead Resolution, so I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the 2017-18 Homestead-Farmstead Resolution as per the enclosure.
No move.
Is there a second? Questions or discussion? And the motion carries. Okay, next up we have our final budget presentation. I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Benko and Mr. Cherry.
Okay, so as all of you may remember, the board voted on the proposed core budget in April, which is a preliminary budget, and as we discussed, things often change from April to May. Things were changing up until this afternoon. So I want to take a look and explain what has changed and what is being proposed as final budget and the budget considerations for you all to vote on tonight. In April's preliminary proposed core budget, we had budgeted revenues of approximately $60.1 million, expenditures of $62.2 million, which led to a core budget deficit of $2.1 With all the changes that have been occurring here in the past month while we work our budget numbers, our final proposed core budget, which reflects changes in revenues, state subsidies, and expenditures, our budgeted revenue currently sits at $60,241,655. Our expenditure budget currently sits at $62,283,435, leaving us with a core budget deficit of $2,41,780. So what has changed since the April preliminary budget that was passed was we took a harder look at some of our federal and state subsidy projections, which not only impacts your revenue side, but it also impacts your expenditures. So what we did was we took a look at our IDA funding and the way that has to be accounted for, and what it did was it increased our federal revenue, but it also increased our federal expenditures because those always equal out at the end of the year. Also, we took a look at April's property valuation when it came in here in early May, and that actually increased our projected real estate revenues by $50,000, so that was good news. And we have seen a trend of that increasing every month that we get a new property valuation. So as far as what's in the core budget, nothing has changed from April. We have our technology component, which is restructuring our existing staff to have a complement of four computer technicians, a network manager, and a director of technology. Also in the core budget affecting alternative education, we are looking at terminating the elementary River Rock Agreement and bringing those kids back into our classrooms here at the district. And doing that, we want to hire two additional part-time aides for in-school suspension and also hire a social worker to bridge the gap between the community and the school district when it comes to problems such as drug and alcohol dependencies. Also, in the core budget, it was the elimination of the part-time library secretary that was hired prior to hiring the library media specialist at the intermediate school and the high school. In the exceptional children department in the core budget because of needs, we placed an additional learning support teacher at the secondary level, and we also are in need of four additional PCAs at the elementary level. We also put in the core budget to hire an assistant principal for the IS, which was voted on tonight, transitioning from two dean intervention specialists to one, the one would be going over to the high school to go back into the classroom. Also, we eliminated the after-school activity buses that we had here in the district because of low utilization rates. And finally, we, in the core budget, were complying with contractual increases in salary and benefits, which was nice to have a new teacher's contract done so we could solidify those amounts in the budget and so we're not guessing anymore, which was very nice. So in addition to those core budget items, again, we have our proposed budget efficiency considerations, and we call them efficiencies because we truly believe that a lot of these considerations will improve our processes here in the district, improve how things are run, and really force us to take a look at every position in the district. So first, we take a look at technology, and the first budget proposal will be to replace Renaissance Learning and Student Island with NWE MAP, and that is an additional cost of $38,875. The next proposal is to replace our outdated current financial software and time clock at a cost of $85,000. Or there is also the option to upgrade or just upgrade our time clock and purchase annual support, and that's at a cost of $21,000. You'll see in your budget proposal vote, it is the first one, and there's some background information on that, on the vote for the financial software that we can take a look at that time if you have any additional questions. Also, for technology, we are proposing to obtain Apple certification for our tech staff to help our teachers out at a cost of $16,000. K-4 Apple lease, which would put a device in, MacBook in all of the teachers' hands, I think we have the entire district covered at that point as far as staff goes, $80,000. And then iPads and Smart Tables, the iPads will be for one to two, grades one to two, and the Smart Tables will be for the kindergarten classrooms. I believe the iPads will put a set of 10 iPads in each one to two classroom, and the Smart Tables will enable us to have one Smart Table at each of the elementaries. The next slide here, other efficiency considerations. As far as secretaries go, this one had changed. We reevaluated the proposal that we had made in April. The proposal now is to take four office secretaries, which would be the two guidance secretaries and two high school secretaries, office secretaries, and move them from, transition them from 12 months down to 10-month employees, which is a savings of $19,000. As far as building aid efficiencies, we are proposing that we go from eight to 10 full-time aides and 22 to 20, I'm sorry, 20, we're going from 10 full-time aides to eight and 20 part-time aides to 22, which would be a savings of $73,402. Custodial efficiencies, as we talked about in April, we want to take a look at putting one head custodian per every two elementary buildings and also having a floater. Currently, our structure is that every elementary has a head custodian building, and we want to take a look and see how that one head custodian per two buildings will work out with the floater being able to provide coverage where needed on a daily basis. And finally, the nurse efficiency, we want to go from two, from three LPNs down to two LPNs, which would be a savings of $43,758. If the board was to accept all of these budget proposals that are currently on the table here, it will be an additional expense of approximately $87,508. So when you take a look at the final budget overview, if you were to take all of those options and vote those in tonight, we will have our revenues at $60.2 million, our expenditures at $62.2. The core budget, again, $2,041,780 deficit. Add in the $87,500 as an additional expense, and the total use of fund balance for 17-18 would then be $2,129,288. What we can do from here is we can run, vote on each proposal separately, and questions can be asked at that time if that is okay.
Okay.
Let me get this back.
Okay, as Mrs. Benko said, we'll go through these individual proposals and ask the questions or comments at this time. So first up is the NWEA MAP program, so I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the budget proposal to replace Renaissance Learning Study Island with NWEA MAP.
So moved.
Is there a second? Questions or discussions on this item?
I knew, talking with several teachers, I knew, oh my gosh. Kathy, ready? I'm sorry. So sorry. Yeah. Kathy, oh my gosh, I'm sorry.
Barb.
Yeah.
He has a headache.
And I talked with her and a couple of teachers, what they've seen of the MAP.
Incredible.
They really like it. They think it's, would be definitely a compliment to our district, so, you know, again, I'm going to take their professional judgment and listen to what they have to say.
Any other questions or discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, Mrs. Benko.
Are you having a problem, Mrs. Herman?
How do you get out of PowerPoint? Excuse me.
The red button, the red circle, beat you out.
Go ahead.
Okay. I opened the voting. Mrs. Herman, did it come up?
It didn't pop up.
Okay, well, let's try another. How would you like to vote, Mr. DeSho?
And the motion carries. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the budget proposal for the replacement of the district's financial software time clock.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussions on this item?
Yeah, I have a question. So this is $85,000. If we just upgrade and get the annual support for our current system, it's $21,000.
That's time clock only.
Okay, right. And is that then a yearly fee that we would have to pay, that $21,000?
Yes, it is.
I think it's also important to recognize that there are benefits in the upgrade that maybe are outside of the initial cost there as far as time savings and other things that are currently happening with consolidation of all the data that's coming in right now. So although the $21,000 is cheaper, obviously upfront here, there's some additional costs that are happening because of the time that it takes with our current system. So it would be a bigger investment to go with this, but the benefits are pretty far reaching.
I get that. I guess my conflict internally is, you know, that's a huge difference, and if, you know, I guess if I'm trying to decide, okay, where do we spend that kind of money? Do we spend it on upgrading a time clock, getting a better time clock, or do we spend it on the K through four lease for the teachers or the Smart Tables? You know, if you're trying to balance out which is for the kids, which is going to benefit them more, so.
Can you, can you just, again, with that, just kind of, and again, my understanding is this is bigger than just a new time clock.
You are correct.
So can you just kind of give us a brief synopsis of what this allows you to do versus what you have to do now as far as merging information?
Yeah, and I can go through the slide that we went through in our preliminary presentation. Currently, our financial software is outdated. It's very cumbersome. We do a ton of duplication of data entry, spreadsheet creation outside the system, and it's not only me or the account, or the accounting manager doing outside worksheets, it's also payroll. And payroll keeps probably, I don't know, 30 spreadsheets. I'm not exaggerating, just different ones, because we can't do what we need to in our current system. So that's one of our, one of our issues. Our current financial system costs have been increasing at an annual rate of 8%. And if you remember the slot, the table that we had shown in the preliminary budget, by year three, year four, we're equalling out in our cost based on the current financial system and the, if we go with a new one, we're about equal as far as cost goes. And year five, year six, we're seeing a big drop down in cost. I didn't include those in the slide earlier. The time clock issue that we have, again, we don't have support for the time clock right now. If something happens, we're working off of paper timesheets. So that was the actual reason we started going down this path. Our new financial software would integrate all of our financial software. So currently, it's one software package, but really it's four applications, actually five, I don't have security on here, but five applications that don't talk to each other. So we find ourselves constantly importing and exporting and having to run various manual processes to get us to where we need to be. It takes a lot of work to get board reports out by, you know, the board meeting each month that are up to date. You know, we, not only do we have those five applications, the payroll, personnel, inventory, fund accounting, and security, but also our time clock applicant tracking system don't talk to our current financial system. So we're running multiple different systems whenever we could have one financial software system to include all of those things. A new financial system... A new financial system would also be hosted by the vendor, so it would be web-based, which would eliminate the need for our technology guys to spend their time on creating, on doing updates. They'll be done automatically and like now where, you know, like I said, the, the district staff does them, and they'll be done overnight. So, you know, we won't see any interruption of service, okay? So when I'm trying to work on reports late at night, or, you know, anytime, I'll be able to access the system as long as I have an internet connection, which now I can't always do. So those are just a few of the things that are going to help some of the efficiencies that we have here.
Some of the things that you just said about our current syst, system honestly scares me. You know, if we're talking to payroll having multiple thirty-some spreadsheets open, to me, that, that sounds like we're ripe for errors and, and, and maybe not mismanagement of funds, but putting them in wrong places and really making a mess of our finances. So this new system can allow us to merge all together under one management system that is shared and talks back and forth to each other and...
And yeah, and don't get me wrong, our staff does a great job at reconciling. We have a lot of internal controls in place.
And I'm not, and I'm not, obviously I'm the...
Hopefully this will take some of that time off of us of having to double and triple check everything that we do.
Can you, can you just, I, I know you're looking at your crystal ball here, but can you maybe give us an of how, of amount of how much time you think could be saved by doing this? I mean...
On it, I, I, I don't know that answer, and I, I don't even, I can't even guess.
Okay.
I, I don't know. Without, yeah, we sat through a presentation yesterday on new software. It was wonderful, but I didn't see the entire package. I don't know what it all can save for us, but there was definitely some great things that it can do for us.
I mean, I agree. I think eighty-five thousand dollars is, is a lot of money, but at the same time, you know, if, if that's going to save us with cutting down on our instances of possibly making mistakes and things like that, I, I think that that, to me, is a, is a good use of, of the funds to make sure that we're, you know, we're taking care of, of the money that's given to us, so.
Are we making a lot of mistakes with the, with...
No, we double and triple and quadruple check things.
It's just...
Yeah.
We double check things. I would probably say that at least from what we saw yesterday, it would probably cut payroll at least like by twenty-five percent of all the, because everything connects, and it should be held in the system. And right now, our system can't hold the information, so we need to keep it on the spreadsheet so we know what we have. And that's part of the challenge is even coming in and having to have reports saying, who's on family medical? And I have to go to our own home room spreadsheet because it's not in our main system that connects to everything else. So I think that's our challenge is not everything's together. So automated reports, we should be able to run those kind of things right away. It just depends on...
Another benefit to going to a new system is that support for the new system is included in the package. Currently, and I didn't take this into consideration of my cost, but currently, anytime that I have a question on how to do something in CSIU, I call, I have to put a ticket in, and they charge me. I had to put a ticket in to talk to a customer service representative about their financial package when I call. Now, they didn't charge me because I, you know, was upset at the time, but that, and so you put a ticket in, then they have to call you back, whereas a new financial, the, the one that we looked at yesterday anyhow, it's pretty, they have like online chats and they, you know, you can ask any question you want at any time and you'll get an answer.
So you, you said our current system doesn't have any support, so if it would go down, it would...
Time clock does not have support right now.
So the twenty-one thousand that you're proposing with the, our current time clock upgrade and annual support that would put support in place?
It would be an annual cost, yes. So the time clocks, they'll come in and they'll upgrade our time clocks and our software. And then we can have support, but again, you're paying for that, yeah.
So, so why haven't we paid for support for that all along?
It wasn't purchased in two thousand and nine when the time clocks were implemented, unfortunately. I'm not sure what the rationale was behind that. But I, I mean, we've come to find out, and we had the same issues with our phones, and we had to upgrade our phones this year. Dave Nelsken can kind of talk to that a little bit. I mean, I, I think that was a cost-saving measure at that time. Hey, let's not get support. It's a brand-new system. We shouldn't need support. Now we're coming into the issue where if we need support, we can't even get it. We can't even pay for it because they're no longer supporting the version that we have.
Am I correct, and even if we upgraded and got some support, paid for that on a yearly basis, we still would have the issue of systems not communicating with each other?
Definitely.
Where I, where I work, we use two computer systems in our office, one that handles the day-to-day operations of the services and one that handles the financial end of, of the payments and all that sort of thing. And it would be so nice to have one system because there is all kinds of opportunity to not have very good records at your fingertips, to be able to, to pull together, to know what you're looking at, to know, you know, what's been paid and what's not been paid versus the services and that sort of thing. So in my opinion, especially if in three and four years down the road, we've, we've equaled out cost-wise and then are in the plus side of it, to me, I think this is a highly valued additional consideration. Probably as equal, I mean, we've, everybody that's on payroll would view it as a, as a benefit. So although, you know, it doesn't necessarily directly affect the kids here, I still see it as a valuable addition for our consideration.
But it does also affect the employees' support of the features is that they can now view their time clock punches. Right now, they can't access, they can access their case at the end after the processes, but one of the features is an employee portal, is they can actually go in and see what their punches are throughout the whole week to make sure they're correct. There are some features, not for the kids, I agree, for employees here, that they can actually go in and see some features that we currently can't offer to them now.
And is that something that the employees have asked for, or...
I don't know if they know it's out there and available. They only know, a lot of them only know what they know unless they've been to another organization that has that feature, then they have called us and said, how can I access this information? But most of our employees, this is mostly what they know, so they, I don't know if they even know that's an option. I think they would like to check it. They can check it on the time clock, but it's hard to get to, whereas this would be all together where they could view their paycheck and, and everything like that.
And is there going to be an annual fee then for, if we bought the new system, is there an annual fee that you have to pay in, for support, for continued support?
It's an annual fee to host the software.
And what is that?
So we have that now. That, um, right now, I think it goes down to, have to find the quote, but I think it goes down to like nineteen thousand a year.
So it's not really that much different than the twenty-one thousand for the current system?
That's just the time clock.
Right, I get that, yeah.
Like, the, by year four...
I'm just, I'm looking at a pure numbers standpoint as well as the big picture.
Yeah, by year four, you're looking at forty-eight thousand dollars to support what we currently have. Versus a twenty thousand, I would, probably by year five, we would be paying twenty-five thousand because I've spread that, the support out a little bit.
Why would our current one go to forty-eight? Why would our current one go to forty-eight?
That's going to, that is the cost. I mean, currently, we are paying, I want to say like thirty-five. That's the cost with the annual time clock support and plus the eight percent increase as I talked about in our current financial system.
In the end, to me, eighty-five thousand dollars is a lot of money, but I also look at the fact that we are now managing a sixty-two million dollar budget and several hundred employees. And in the end, eighty-five thousand dollars to me is a drop in the bucket then, when you're looking at trying to manage a sixty-two million dollar budget, hundreds of employees, having the systems talk to each other, creating the efficiencies, helping to prevent the errors. You know, when I hear that we have to have thirty spreadsheets involved in a payroll process, that scares me, quite frankly. You know, in the end, I mean, no matter how good the double check, triple check, quadruple check is, there's still room for error. So to me, this is an investment well worth, you know, as we move forward and as the district grows and as our budget grows, and we become more complex on our financial reporting. I just think this makes a lot of sense for us. Any other questions or discussion on this? Mrs. Benko, let's have the vote now. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the budget proposal for Apple certification training for our technology staff.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussions on this item?
How many staff members does this cover?
It will cover six.
And this will allow them to do, to make the repairs and that kind of stuff, so we don't have to outsource that to anybody else, and we can do that all in-house?
And how many current IT people do we have that are Apple certified?
Zero.
Zero, okay.
Do we have a cost of how much we're spending annually on, on repairs at this point?
I, I don't have that off the top of my head.
I know we do a lot of our students, we're trying to do some of the, like the minor stuff.
We are, yeah. We've had to send some stuff out, but our students are fixing some of it, correct?
We also have Apple Care on a lot of our devices, so we've actually purchased the protection, so this would allow us to actually, in future leases, decrease that amount because we wouldn't have to buy the protection like we are now.
And then would, would we be able to kind of get the double or thing on this and actually have our technology folks maybe supervise our, our Apple students and act, be able to increase their knowledge and capabilities? So that would be...
And that's actually what Jeb's doing right now in his technology. Yep. So our kids will benefit too.
Any other questions? Okay, Mrs. Benko. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the budget proposal for a K through four staff Apple lease.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussions on this item?
This is not so much, I'm sorry, on, on this, but I know we're, we're really going forward with our one-to-one initiative, so to speak. How is our infrastructure within our district right now? Are we able to efficiently handle the amount of devices that we're, we're getting, or do we need to, to do something to upgrade that?
Now, we upgraded most of the, the technologies and so forth when we did that. The only thing that we probably need to increase is our broadband. So I would recommend that the district in the future take a look at putting two broadband lines. And there are times when the teachers are connecting that they get dropped, and it's not because of the infrastructure itself, it's just because we need more broadband. So we actually have maxed out what we can from the IU. So I would recommend probably exploring the idea of putting a separate line in and probably dividing the district so that half the district shares speed on one line and the other half the district does the other. And I think you'll find much better speed and accuracy. But other than that, all the switches have been replaced, all the wireless routers have been replaced, so all those things have been done.
So, so if for some, you know, for some reason, lag goes down on entry school, every student, every teacher decides to get on at one time, I mean, can we handle that? I, I don't know if that's even, and they can handle that? Okay. And I, I, that's above my head, so I have no idea.
So we, okay, I'm confused because, Mr. Cherry, you're saying that we need to increase our broadband, Jen, you're saying we can already handle it. So I, I mean, I hear stories from my own students saying, yeah, I was on Study Island and it got dropped. You know, they lost it. So I don't know, which is it? Are we putting the cart before the horse by saying, okay, yeah, let's do this K through four lease, and let's do these iPads and smart tables and have all this technology, which I think is wonderful for our students, but if we can't handle it, you know, should we be looking at the broadband first before we decide to go ahead and push for something like this?
Dave wants to say something.
We, we actually, by the way, July one, I did increase our bandwidth.
Yeah.
So our bandwidth is going up, didn't it, at launch, about twenty percent? So that in and of itself, the quicker it goes, the less space it takes upstairs. It doesn't sit there that long, it's already going. So we're going to five gigahertz, that's moving.
And you think that'll be enough to deal with the issue?
Okay, I have a question there then too, because I thought iPads weren't compatible with our i, interactive whiteboards. I thought these don't hook up to the interactive whiteboards properly, that they're having a lot of issues with them. No?
If the Apple TV device, you can hook up, I use it all the time.
Oh, as long as they have the Apple TV?
And if not, you get the dongle. Jen has the dongle right there. And we bought, and we bought every teacher one of those.
Everybody has an Apple TV on, okay.
So this K through four lease is strictly for the teachers to have one of these?
Yep.
So every teacher would have one of these, which would give them the ability to do what?
They, they also, they have Dells right now, so, and three-fourths of the district has these devices, so it would be giving them what all the, all the other teachers have.
Okay, so their current Dells can't do the interactive...
No, they can do it, yeah.
Okay, with, with that adapter that she has?
Yep.
Okay. But they're outdated, or are they...
They're older, yes.
Do any of the K to fours currently have the Apples? Or is this, this is a new group that now will be on par with the rest?
Just for the teachers, right, so...
Correct. That, that's what I mean. But right now, it's nobody in K to four has those, is that correct? I kind of look at these next two items, this one and the next one, sort of, again, as investments, first one being in our staff, second one being on, you know, in our students. So, you know, for me, I kind of think, you know, I look beyond the cost and look at it as an investment in our personnel, so that's how I would view it.
I think there's some value in having everybody on the same platform as well, you know, so you don't have Dells in some areas, Macs in another area. You've got the consistency. So then from a support standpoint, our folks are all talking with one, you know, message, one device across the board, so. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, Mrs. Benko. Next up, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the budget proposal for K through two tech initiative for iPads and smart tables.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussions on this item?
How much is a smart table?
It's about four thousand.
About four thousand. And how much is a set of ten iPads?
Three and four.
So I, I guess my question is, why smart tables for kindergartens instead of doing the iPads for them?
They already have iPads.
The kindergartners already have iPads?
They already have sets of ten.
In every building?
Yep.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
All right. I'm showing my age here. What is a smart table?
It's like if you take an iPad and you flip it over, and it looks like a little hockey, air hockey space.
The mini coffee.
That's a size, yeah, it's both sizes of a coffee table, I guess, so it allows about five users on it.
I was going to say, about six students, you can do that, and one person, and that line, it allows them, they can interact.
Very interactive. So they can set it up as a center, they can set it up as extension activities, so there's a lot of things that teachers can do with it.
So, so is that something that's, I know I'm asking a lot of questions tonight, sorry. Is that something that, I mean, it sounds really cool, but if you're talking twelve thousand dollars, so, because we need three more, right? And they already have the iPads, is, are the iPads enough? Do we really need to spend that additional twelve thousand dollars, or can that be used somewhere else? I mean, Troy, I, maybe you can comment on, is it just something fun and cool for the teachers to use? Is it something that's like, yeah, everybody has to have one of these? to use? Is it something that's like, yeah, everybody has to have one of these?
I think it's an additional piece of valuable technology that if implemented correctly and consistently and with a lot of the, I think there's ways to use it, we really haven't even touched the surface yet, because it would be great, I'm sure we'll have some additional training with it as we get more and more, more and more devices. I think it would behoove us to have some additional, you know, development to see really what all is there to be used. But it was brought to us in a capacity at live to really try it out, and it has really become beneficial, so I really think would be valuable to equip it.
Do they use the iPads alone, or is it always with the smart table?
No, they are. It's a completely different device.
Okay, okay. So it's not like you have to have iPads to make the smart table work? Okay.
I think part of our original, one of our original thinking was, we have students at the upper elementary, middle school, and high school who have a device, they're walking around, and they're engaged with technology in many different ways. So how do we kind of set the stage with our younger learners, so that when they get this device in third or fourth grade, they're not kind of like, what am I doing with this? So we, our idea was, how do we set up a classroom environment that provides that level of engagement like they'll get when they have the device? So it's kind of a nice handoff. So we looked at the iPads for the teachers to use. We have interactive short throws, so that now teachers can take a projector and they can project on any image in their room, and it becomes automatically interactive. And we also threw the smart table in there, too, because we thought that that would be another way of engaging our students and getting them used to what their future is here in the district. So that was kind of big picture when we were taking a look at these items.
And I guess my first thought on that is that by three years old, most every kid on the planet knows how to use an iPad or some type of device. So I'm not sure that, you know, it's really, I mean, I get, I get that transition and that that's important, and that they'll see what other technologies available in the district. You know, I also get concerned from the other side of things, of being too technology-oriented, that we're missing some other personal pieces for our students as well. There's been a lot of research done on that, and, you know, I think that's important to consider, too, you know, what we're setting our kids up for this technology, which is great and necessary in today's world, but, you know, where's the balance? So that's a whole other discussion for another day.
Any other questions? Okay, Mrs. Banko. And the motion carries. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the budget proposal transitioning the secondary office secretaries to guidance and to office from 12 to 10-month employees.
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussions on this item? Hearing none, Mrs. Banko.
Jen, you have a motion and a second.
And the motion carries.
Thank you.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the budget proposal to move 10 full-time aides to eight, and from 20 part-time aides to 22.
Is that moved?
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussions on this?
I have some questions about this. I know that the job of the aides, sometimes some are on the playground, sometimes some are in the cafeteria, but I know all of our aides are used as instructional aides now. So I just need to make sure that this isn't pulling aides out of the classrooms, helping the children that need to be helped.
The instructional aides that we purchase through Title I aren't part of this. So they're, that's a totally separate funding stream, so they're aligned with the reading specialists, so it won't impact them.
Okay, so if a building has 20 hours of, that they're using aides within the classroom, they will still have that amount of time to use aides within their classrooms?
Yeah, the buildings, or the principals will still have the discrepancy, the ability to schedule them any way they would like.
Okay.
Yep. And this actually gives them a little more freedom, too, because they'll have more bodies to schedule versus just having one who's there for all day. They'll actually have two people who are there for four and a half hours, so they can now discuss, when is the best time to bring that person in? So they don't need to necessarily be there right at the beginning of the day. They could say, "Hey, I need you more at 10:45," and you'll work your four and a half hours from 10:45 until later in the afternoon. So it gives them some a little more flexibility.
So wouldn't it impact any need they would have for an instructional aide here or there? It would not impact...
They would still be able to schedule as they see fit.
And these, so these aides aren't in the classrooms helping, helping with instruction?
There are some, depending on what they do with their extra time.
And will that short, this won't shortchange the classrooms that need that extra support?
I think, like, even at North Salem, this is, this is actually the same amount that they currently have, so...
They have the same amount. We have a full-time aide, and we have a rest of our time. I believe some other buildings have maybe part-time, and maybe a little bit full-time. So, again, they have more bodies to kind of cover various areas. They do much recess duty, but I also, I mean, I think most of us do have them pushed into the classroom to do the...
With their extra time, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, Mrs. Banko. And the motion carries. Next, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the budget proposal to obtain savings through the attrition of one head custodian.
Is that moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
The, I know the proposal, can you just tell us what, what do the head custodians do now? Are they more of a supervisory position?
I'm gonna ask...
Or would they transition into that role?
I'm gonna ask Dave Nelson to speak to that.
Head custodians do all the roles. They aren't supervisors, they're not allowed to be supervisors, because they're part of the union, but they're leaders. They direct people, help people get their job done. They fill in when we have custodians that are out, we're short, somebody's off sick, somebody's patient, they have a personal day, whatever. But they're the ones that make sure everything is done. They're there at night. Majority of the custodians work, we have one in each apartment a day, so the head custodian works evenings to watch, oversee, oversee the part-time, and there's no, one other full-time person
So, so going down to one head custodian in between two buildings, will that person be able to still oversee both those buildings sufficiently to make sure that everything is being completed satisfactorily?
They should be, but they're not gonna be there all the time.
And this won't leave us, and this won't leave the building shorthanded as well, as far as making sure that everything gets cleaned at nighttime?
They'll still have to make sure, oversee that.
Right, but, but they won't, they won't, I guess right now, they're, they're part of that custodial, custodial staff under the current arrangement, correct? So I guess my question is, if you take that person out of the mix, and they're not gonna be there full-time, will that put additional responsibilities on the other custodians to make sure that, am I, am I making, making sense on that?
It would, it would have to.
Okay.
We definitely have a short, short hour, if you want. One person's gonna have to be at two different buildings.
Right, right.
Of course, the floater is there, floater is there just because, what if they had custodians out, now who covers that? That would be, they gotta be able to cover those two buildings. The floater, when they're all there, the floater between all the buildings, you have somebody that's out sick, or somebody that's off.
Is it possible that the head custodian at the high school or intermediate school, there's one currently at both, correct? Is it possible that they also could be utilized in the event of, you know, at the elementary schools? Is that reasonable that...
They could be if you had it. They could be if you had it. I mean, we don't, there's so much going on in high school, especially, I'd hate to pull that person out. I mean, I already left him on the back there. I'd hate, I'd hate to take that person out in the event of, there's so much that goes on in high school. I mean, those of you that have people banned in sports and drama and choir and all that, you know, I mean, you know what goes on in high school. You've been there, it's a lot, it's a lot of football, basketball, being arrested, trying, you know, this is going on. Intermediates, not a whole lot better, it's a lot that goes on. And that's all set up, tear down, making sure things are ready, kids are done. They could, I think it would cover.
In, in the case of an emergency, you would have people to pull from in the case of an emergency?
Which is what we did for Saturday, when we had Saturday on Thursday. We did that, we called kids from intermediate school, ate lunch in the auditorium, and had a concert that night. So people from North Salem, because there wasn't anybody in or going except for an hour in the morning, all went to intermediate school to help get that cleaned up, to get ready for the concert, and sort of shook the people up and they did a fantastic job. I didn't hear any ban complaints, but Lino news is good news.
But, but in a normal night, on a normal day, you feel the staff should be able to get what needs to be done. I mean, I only concern is, I want to make sure obviously that our, that our schools look good, that they're presentable for our students and any visitors may come into our schools, and, and again, this, and sanitation is why, sanitary lies.
Sanitation, yeah, sanitation.
There are the three, right there. That's important. For all the kids get sick, that's important.
Absolutely, yeah.
We do this, we start getting kids that are sick all the time, that's when we mitigate it.
Right, right.
The way this reads here, we're gonna get the high school cleaned out with one less custodian.
No, high school, we don't want to change any of the high school words.
Well, it says we're not hiring anybody to replace the retiring one.
We're gonna transfer one of the other custodians there. We have six total right now custodians, one each building. So the high school and intermediate school will have one, and then the remaining three, because we're gonna be down to five individuals who are retiring, we're gonna be down to five custodians. The remaining three that aren't at the intermediate school or high school will cover the other four buildings. Two, one custodian will cover two buildings, the other custodian will cover two buildings, and the third individual will be a floater between those four.
Any other questions? Okay, Mrs. Banko. Motion carries. Next, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the budget proposal to eliminate one LPN position.
Is that moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussions on this?
Can you explain what this means for the district, if we eliminate one LPN position?
The one floater that we currently have won't be in place.
Okay, so what would be the structure, then, in each building?
So one registered, school-registered nurse at the high school, one school-registered nurse at the intermediate school, two certified school nurses that are shared between two elementaries. Also, they would have LPNs that when the certified registered nurse isn't there, the LPN would be there to cover them.
They each have an LPN?
The elementary schools, yes. The schedules, you can see the schedule there.
I guess I'm also trying to get clarification for anybody out there that wants to know.
So there would always be, under this schedule, and I'm kind of confused on this one, too, there will always be nurse coverage at each building?
Yeah.
Well, what happens, like, on a day, the Thursday, so I went on the field trip today to Zoo America, and one of the nurses, Kathy Leibl, was perfect, was along for student needs, and so did that leave her building without a nurse? If we don't have this floater that we're proposing to get rid of, does that mean that, that there won't be a floater to cover that in those kind of situations?
You also have a certified nurse at the intermediate school. We remember the state ratio is one to 1,500, so she could also fill in, and in a case of emergency, go down to that building and assist.
Well, I get the ratio. Unfortunately, our buildings don't work according to ratios. That's not how our student population is structured, so I guess I worry about that, that immediate emergency, and making sure, making sure the coverage is there.
So on this chart, we have, when I look at Dover Elementary, they, they'll have a nurse in their building, oh, I see A, B, C, D, D, yeah, so they will have one all day, every day.
It's the same structure that they have right now in the buildings. It's the exact same structure.
Okay, well, I know sometimes there's, there's no nurse at some, and then, like, a nurse in line...
That's what I'm saying, there's a void now even, in our current schedule. So, I mean, I can't guarantee you, if we kept our current schedule, we adopted a new schedule, there's always gonna be someone there. So, I mean, we call subs for our nurses, too, and sometimes we don't get them as well. So, like I said, even under our current one, just like you said, there are times when no one's available, just simply because you have more than one nurse or LPN call off.
So aren't we setting ourselves up for an even bigger issue by trying to eliminate the floater?
Like I said, it's a proposal, so...
Well, isn't that what the floater did, too? The floater filled in, then, right, when there wasn't a nurse, like, when somebody was sick?
Right, and sometimes, you know, sometimes they went to the high school or the intermediate school, even though it's not needed to. So sometimes we were just plugging them into a schedule just to plug them in.
My concern, I, I know I've voiced my opinion concerns before, being that I have a son who has nut allergies, as well as sunflower seeds, which is completely crazy, but it's true. I'm just really concerned, even now, it concerns me that there may not be a nurse available. And I don't know if it's, if the administration of the building principals, if every, if they are certified in, like, if CPR or EpiPen administration, just because, like I've said before, some, there might be a child who doesn't know they're allergic to bees and gets stung outside at recess, and it's a matter of minutes. And if there's not a school nurse, or the closest nurse is the intermediate school to get to live, I mean, that, that there is, you know, how many minutes can be the difference between life and death? So that's, that's a huge concern for me. That's, I think we need to look at, like I said, I don't know, maybe there, there is protocol for instances through the administration or staff, but I really think if there's not, it needs to be looked at, because it really concerns me.
Mr. Cherry, had you said last time, last month, that our principals are, I don't know, certified was the word, but they are able, they were given instruction on how to use an EpiPen?
No, I said, their certificate allows them to administer.
Allows them to, okay.
Yeah. Like, I, as a principal, I was, I worked in a nurse's office during cafeteria time. If the nurse wasn't there, or he or she went on lunch break, I could go in and administer medication and do those things. Nothing prevents me from doing that, and my certificate covers it.
But a principal who is allowed to do that wouldn't necessarily... But a principal who is allowed to do that wouldn't necessarily be able to look at a kid and say, okay, you're having, you're in anaphylactic shock right now, I gotta administer this, whereas a nurse would be able to recognize the signs immediately.
Would hope.
Oh, yeah.
Looking, looking at the schedule, there's no duplication of nursing anywhere. Like, yeah, it's either the LPN or the certified school nurse at any one given time and, and not anything. So, I, I would have to say to look, you know, it's a cost savings of, I think, forty-three thousand or around there is what, what it was. I, for myself, I'm not quite sure that that justifies uh, the elimination of a position, just because if we do in fact have trouble getting replacements or, you know, substitutes, if we're already dealing with that, to eliminate a floater when there's no duplication at all there, might be setting ourselves up for potential problems down the road. To me, I, I don't know that it, the savings is worth, that, that's kind of my rationale on it.
Well, and we're taking back so many special needs kids too, that kind of concerns me, you know, with issues with theirs, so.
Other questions? Okay, Mrs. Benko. The motion fails. Okay. Yeah, if you wanna go ahead and read the changes, Mrs. Benko.
Okay, so um, for the next voting item, um, the tax rate approval. Uh, the buzzer, the budget resolution that was posted on um, the agenda, um, had highlighted items in it um, because we didn't know the final numbers to insert into the resolution. So, um, if you open the resolution, under section six, use of fund balance, the number that will go in there will be, um, that, the language will be the board of school directors hereby approves the use of two million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, forty-six dollars from the district's fund balance, drawn in the following amounts from the accounts identified, that will be used for committed for retirement, again, in the amount of two million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, forty-six dollars. Under um, section, section six for the approval of the budget, the final two thousand and seventeen, eighteen school budget as described below is hereby approved, that will um, read total revenue of sixty million, two hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars. The total expenditures will be sixty-two million, four hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and one dollars.
Okay, and what's the final deficit again then?
The final deficit is two million, one seven, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, forty-six dollars.
Okay. Just a question I would have then, if we are taking the two, approximately two point two million from the general fund, that takes our general fund then to what, and what percentage of our budget is that overall total then, that general fund? I know there's a state ratio where they like us to be with our general fund, and we're well above that at this point.
Um, we, we are well above that. If you give me a minute, I will open my spreadsheets. Okay, so in the preliminary budget, let me find the slide that it was on. So, our, um, within this slide, our projecting ending fund balance would have been, with the two point one million, which is approximately the same, you're gonna add about sixty thousand dollars to that. Um, our ending fund balance as of June thirtieth projected um, would be approximately thirteen point four million dollars.
So, we're still well above the state ratios then that they like to see?
Right, the state ratio that is given is three to eight percent. Um, that is the unassigned fund balance piece. Um, that will still be under the three to eight percent of budgeted expenditures, definitely.
Okay. All righty.
The anticipated, i- if we do actually have to pull money from the um, reserve funds, the anticipated area that that would be pulled from was from the piecers portion of that, is that correct?
Yes, it's committed for retirement.
I thought that's a restricted fund. In your budget you handed out, it says it's restricted.
That's where um, the board is giving the approval to take those funds from.
I was on the impression we couldn't take that out.
We can.
Okay, hasn't been touched for years.
Correct.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the resolution of the Dover Area School District establishing the tax rates and approving the budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and seventeen.
Is that moved?
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion?
So, just to be clear, this is again a status quo millidrate, correct?
Correct.
Correct, we are not increasing taxes.
And that would be for the third year in a row now, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, Mrs. Benko.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Like waiting here anxiously.
And the motion carries.
Just, Mr. President, may I make a comment?
Certainly.
Related to that, um, for those of you that might be looking, you know, upon, in upon us now or not really familiar with where we've been as a district for the last few years, you might look at this budget and say to yourself, how in the world could a responsible board approve a deficit like this? I'd just like to address that in case anybody might be wondering what the thought process behind that is. Um, for a number of years now, we've been operating under the mindset that we've been looking at budgets that were in deficits to use up some fund balances which have been amassed over a number of years. Through a number of reasons, uh, this, this past year being a classic case, uh, revenues came in higher than what we were expecting. There were funds that came to us that we didn't know were gonna be coming. So, plan con funds that were finally released that were, you know, kept in, on the back burner for a long time, so um, throughout these years, when we've been anticipating using some of that fund balance to balance the budget, we have, actually haven't had to. Um, as a result of very good strategy and management and working within our means, our administration has also done a very good job of operating within its means, and so the end result has been that there's been times when we thought we were gonna have to use up some fund balance to balance the budget, but it hasn't, hasn't actually happened. So, again, here we are, looking at where we're at right now with an anticipated deficit. You can't always know how things are gonna end up. There's possibility that there may be some changes again along the way, and maybe the two point one million dollars that we're looking at right now may not pan out exactly as it is. There's a lot of fluctuation in government right now, and it could be more, it could be less, but at our best estimate, this is kind of where we're at right now. So, knowing that there is some fund balance that's there for utilization, it makes better sense in, in, I'll speak for myself, in my opinion, to not raise taxes and plan to use some of that fund balance, and, you know, if things do actually pan out as it's anticipated, I mean, all indications are that we could end up with a, a bit of a deficit this year as suggested. If that happens, then we may have to look at next year, taking a look at, you know, where we're at, and do we continue the same strategy? But I just thought it's important that everyone knows that so that it's, they're not viewing us as a board saying, how in the world could you operate and pass a budget like that that's not living within its means? So, that's kind of where we're at. I just thought it was good to make that comment for everybody to understand.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Okay. Next on our agenda, I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint Tracy Kroom as the interim superintendent, effective July first, two thousand and seventeen, at a fifteen hundred dollar monthly stipend.
So moved.
We have lots of motions. Is there a second in there? Motions and seconds all around. Any questions or discussions? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko. And the motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Kroom. Okay, I think it's time for a golf update. Mr. Cherry.
I thought you skipped over, all right. Uh, yep, our golf tournament is scheduled for uh, next Friday, so I just wanna once again thank Bobby uh, and Katie for all of their work that they've put into it. This is our first annual uh, golf tournament that will be sponsored by the Dover Eagle Foundation, so they have actually gone above and beyond the call of duty, late nights, uh, weekends, trying to get all of our sponsors, our teams put together. So, uh, again, just a big kudos to Katie and to Bobby for uh, putting this together, and I'll look forward to coming back next month to tell you how successful it was.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, York Adams Academy, Mr. Emig.
I have, uh, I know the graduation is coming up, but I have another disappointing announcement from York Adams Academy. As you all know, the uh, superintendent of record, Dr. Lard, Dr. Lardie, has taken another job elsewhere, so she will be, be departing York Adams Academy. In her place is going to be the superintendent of Eastern, taking her place. But I got an email a couple days ago that the director, um, Mr. Detzel, is leaving for California, so we're in the search for a new director for York Adams Academy. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Emig. Any questions or discussion? Okay, York County School of Technology, Mr. Delauter.
Last month, the authority, York County uh, School Technology Authority as well as the JOC, uh, held a joint meeting to go over some bond refinancing issues that we wanna take a look at for some capital improvements that are needed at the school. Uh, there was some really good discussion uh, at that meeting. Um, no resolutions, but we're gonna continue that again next Thursday. Um, so when I hear anything else on what their, you know, what, what resolution has, I will bring that back before the board.
RBC will be here to speak of that resolution on Thursday.
Okay, there you go.
There you go. Quick.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Okay, LIU Special Education, Mr. Cherry.
Nothing at this time.
Okay, questions? Legislative, Mr. Rollhauser.
Yes, in Sunday's newspaper is an interesting article by Representative Gillespie about how complicated it is to change the tax structure in Pennsylvania, and he don't look for anything to be done. And I talked to Representative Grove today at the polls, and the only news he was, it were at one point three billion shortage. Other than anything being passed, nothing's got passed yet.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, PSBA, Mrs. Brenton.
There is a town hall we talked about previously, and I'm having problems getting, scrolling down here. Um, I believe the one that is closest to us is in Camp Hill, and that is, oh, Mechanicsburg, on May twenty-fifth, from six to eight. So far, attending are Senator Mike Fulmer and Representative Patty Kim. There is also, they are, the PSBA is accepting proposals for their twenty-eighteen legislative platform. Um, the board is invited to submit proposals for consideration for the platform. The platform is their official record of positions on legislative issues and guides, the association's advocacy efforts. So, this is our opportunity to have a say in positions that PSBA takes on um, behalf of its members to the Capitol. The deadline to submit items for consideration is Friday, June thirtieth. And then again, the, the delegate assembly on October twentieth.
Questions or discussion? Okay, Dover Industrial Development Committee, Mrs. Herman.
I'm not into report. Next meeting is next Wednesday.
Okay. Critical Response Drill, Mr. DeSho.
Uh, yes, we had our drill last Thursday. I wanted to take this time to thank all of the staff. They did an amazing job there. It was very impressive on how they took all of the kids from North Salem on a rainy day. They thought they were gonna walk, but they decided to throw a curveball in there and get buses to come pick them up. They were able to get all the students out in less than an hour, all the way to the uh, intermediate school. All of the kids were happy, they were excited. I was there to watch them all come off the bus. They were excited to see their older brothers and sisters. They were excited. That's where they did their swimming lessons. From just my experience, it didn't look like any of them were bothered. They were happy to watch the minions. They all had a great time in the auditorium, uh, so I was very impressed on how well the staff did that day, and uh, I definitely applaud you for your time and effort for it, so good job. Um, also, I just wanted to let everybody know that with all of the police, the fire department, the North Salem uh, students, the intermediate students, uh, York County nine-one-one, uh, the transportation, there was a total of eleven hundred people involved. there was a total of 1,100 people involved in this. So it was very big. Obviously, not everything went perfect, but they did an extremely great job. They reunification with 60 parents, so that went really well. And I'd like to thank the six high school students for the video and photography, and also the seven victims. They were very good, their acting was great on the TV, so.
Maybe another tag for the rest of the day.
So yes, once again, thank you for everything, and that's all I have.
Any questions or discussion?
I just want to say, I was a parent of North Salem kids, so I was getting all of Mr. Cobb's constant updates of what was going on. I also have a child in the intermediate school, so I was also getting those updates. The high school was also sending some updates, not quite as many as North Salem. And I thought it was great, it was very efficient. I was getting them on my phone, my cellphone, as well as emails, as well as calls on my home phone. My husband was getting calls and emails. So it was, it was very efficiently done, I did appreciate that. As far as, I know you said, you know, it seemed like the students all were having a good time, and I'm sure they were, because it was a new experience for them. I do appreciate, I know Mr. Cobb did a debriefing the following day, which I think was essential. I will say, my fifth grader, it happened in the sixth grade pod, North Salem is kind of laid out, you know, sixth grade all the way down, and it happened in the sixth grade pod, she's in the fifth grade. So she wasn't there right at the action, but she was very much affected by it. You know, she said she could hear the screaming, she could hear the police pounding on the doors and saying, you know, yelling different things, Northern York Regional Police. And my second grader could hear some of the yelling and the banging as well. So they weren't unaffected, which is why I do think that the debriefing was absolutely necessary. I don't know if there's been any trickle down from any of that or not, but I do appreciate you doing that for the students and for the teachers. But overall, I mean, the feedback from my kids, and I was one of the reunification parents as well, and I just, I think that the teachers, the staff, I mean, everybody that was a part of that did such an excellent job. You know, very clear process to it all, even with picking up the kids, very thorough, you know. People sitting there knew who I was, but they weren't taking any shortcuts to make sure I went through the whole identification process. So I just thought, from all the parts that I was involved in as a parent, you know, I kudos to everybody. I got to talk to Officer Allen a little bit afterwards, and he felt really good about it as well. So thank you for doing that.
I want to make a comment. I had seen a Facebook post that was posted from a parent of students who knew about it but forgot about it that day, and lives in that area, and, you know, was coming to go past North Salem at the time, and the road was closed, and just like, wow, you know, and it kind of alarmed her. It's like, even though it was a drill, the thought process that goes through your mind as a parent. And she made the comment that, you know, thanks to the district for forward thinking and planning ahead for something like that. Hopefully, it's planning we never have to use, but I agree. You know, it's something that you never really want to face, you don't want to think about it, but in the event that you do, having the wherewithal to have, you know, protocols in place and a strategy for how to deal with something like that, I don't know if you could ever place a value on that. But, you know, there's a lot of work went into that. I know we initially started to talk about that years ago.
There you go.
So thanks, thanks to you to, you know, to keep that going, and for everybody that had a role in that, and it was kind of your thought years ago, trying to make sure, you know, we did something like that, so.
I just want to personally thank Dave and Brad. I mean, they really spearheaded the entire process. I mean, Brad provided scripts and timing and so forth, Dave made sure everything was ready to go, toilets were in the classroom. So I mean, you know, the two of them did a tremendous amount of work on this project, so I just want them to be recognized that, above and beyond everything else that they do, I also threw this on their plate as well. So thank you both for going above and beyond.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Superintendent's Report, Mr. Cherry.
I'm going to wait till Thursday.
Okay. Miscellaneous, any other comments or observations from our board members?
Yeah, I would like to say that I attended the prom on Saturday evening, and I was sort of leery when I got there, because it was directly across from York High. But, and this was the first time that the Agricultural Museum actually held a prom. But the affair was very well done. Mr. Wassler and his staff did an excellent job. I was leery, but knowing that he had, I guess, eight policemen outside keeping track of everything, I think he had eight, something like that, he had one.
Seven or four and one.
All right. But it was a very nice affair. I, when I got there, I went up, as usual, there was no table assignment, so I went up, I grabbed the table in the middle of the upstairs, looking over, and then I found out that there were no table assignments, and so I reserved seats, and the kids came up, and they said, "Can we sit here?" And I kept telling them, "No." They asked if they could take chairs, I said, "No." And then when I found out that nobody was joining me, I said, "Go ahead." So all in all, it was a, it was a great night, and Mr. Wassler and your staff, I thank you for a fabulous night. It really was a great place to hold the prom. And the other thing is, don't forget the choral concert at the high school is this Saturday.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody for this budget, but I especially, I think, I want to thank Mr. Cherry and Mrs. Benko for this budget. I know a lot of times, we as a board get the credit and/or the tongue lashings, whether we raise taxes or we keep them the same, but I think it's their work that goes into this, creating these budgets and, you know, keeping us on a stable footing financially. So I do want to thank them, I know a lot of work goes into this. I think she's probably going to start already on next year's budget, probably next Monday. So I do want to thank, I know a lot goes into that, and I appreciate the hard work that you guys do on this.
Thank you. I want to echo that as well, and thank Ms. Benko for all her hard work, and Mr. Cherry, and everybody. I mean, I've, it's been about a year that I've been here now on the board, and I'm very pleased with everything in the direction the district's going, and I want to thank everybody, teachers, administration, board, fellow board members, I think, we're moving Dover, and we even got a shout out from the governor in his budget address, which I thought was pretty cool. So, but I also wanted to say, I had the opportunity to, this morning and Friday, to attend Mrs. Jamie Branstadter's English 102 class, which presented banned, B-A-N-N-E-D, not banned, like instruments, banned books. And it was a phenomenal experience. I actually stayed for about 45 minutes after the presentations, talking to several of the students, who just blew me away with their forward thinking and their ability to take what they learned from reading these books, which included One Flew Over the Cuckoo's Nest, Beloved, A Handmaid's Tale, were just some of them. And they did a phenomenal job in relating, and just the critical thinking skills, and I mean, they probably gave better presentations than I've seen at a college level, several of them. So kudos to Mrs. Branstadter and the staff at Dover High School. I definitely look forward to next, well, unfortunately, I can't do it next year, because I think English 102 was one of the ones, one of the programs that I think we're not doing next year.
The assignment is moved into the new class.
Into the new class. Okay, great, because it was an amazing assignment, and make sure that we're all invited next year, because it was, it was a great experience.
So wanted to thank those students who made us the cards related to the outdoor education. I thought that was really neat, there's some really great, great cards there, so much appreciation for that.
Anybody else? Okay, now that Mr. Nelson has shut down the air conditioning, the lights are next. So we will move on to our second public comment period. This is for items on or off of the agenda, it's a two-minute period. So if you have anything you'd like to comment on, please come to the seats with the microphones.
I have two things, very quickly. Do I get six minutes and say? Cheryl Guchal, I am a fifth grade teacher at Dover Elementary, and I also run the outdoor education program. And I wanted to personally thank the board for continuing to support the outdoor education program. I think the kids, no, I know the kids come away with, from that program, learning a lot about our environment, and also how we need to take care of our community. They get a chance to tour the Dover Township Waste Parted Treatment Plant, and they get to go to the Lenhart Gerber Cemetery at the end of the road where North Salem is, and they, they didn't even notice the police cars on Thursday. That's how great Mrs. Eby is at her stories at the cemetery. So I know there are more cards coming, and I'm glad that you appreciate them. The second thing, also from a science teacher, is that we're trying to make our courtyard at Dover Elementary beautiful. We got some plants from Mayscapes, and we planted them, but we desperately need mulch, or they're going to die over the summer. That courtyard has not been mulched or touched since the day it was built. And we now have so many weeds, well, we don't now, because I had the kids in there today, and we were taking the weeds out. So they had some trouble focusing, but we've got it taken care of. But we desperately need mulch in that courtyard. I think it was kind of overlooked at the beginning of the year, when we, when we did all the rest of the schools. So if we could somehow find some mulch, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for your patience tonight. I know this was a longer meeting, but it's a very important meeting for us. I want to thank my fellow board members as well. This was, you know, a tough night as well, to go through all of the budget and all of the items, and I think it really went well tonight. So thank you for your cooperation. Again, thanks to Mr. Cherry and Mrs. Benko for all your work, and I know the building level folks to have contributed to this process as well, so thank you too for your efforts on all of this as well. It's not an easy process. With that, our future meetings, this Thursday, we have our board committee meetings at 6:00 PM, and our board planning meeting at 7:00 PM. And then our next regular board meeting will be at 7:00 PM on June 20th. So if there's nothing further, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Is there a second?
Agreed.
All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.